Good to go. The press and the Down Beach Current were notified of this meeting. A copy of same was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the municipal website. Meeting will come to order. Would you please stand for the flag salute?
Penchant salute. I congratulate you, United States of America, and to your policy, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and just soul.
Tom, would you call the roll? Mr. Becker, here. Ms. Thauvin.
Here.
We have before us the minutes of our meetings on April 3rd. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I second that motion. Mr. Becker, yes. Ms. Thauvin.
Yes.
Before we go to public comment, we are honored today to be visited by our Assemblyman and ex-mayor Vince Mazzio, who would like to speak to all of us for a few minutes. Vince, welcome.
You want to take -- the mic comes out.
Mic will come out, Vince. You may stand wherever you like, Assemblyman.
Okay, I appreciate that. Mike, it's, uh, I call you Mike, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. As you know, I was elected in November and I had a long recount and I ended up winning by 51 votes. So, for a lot of reasons, and not just because I won by a close margin, I thought it was important to go around to each municipality that's in my district and introduce myself and tell a little bit what I'm trying to do and what's going on as far as in District Two. The topic of discussion the last few weeks or month or so was the 2% arbitration cap that we've been talking about. As you know, it passed through the Senate and it didn't pass through the Assembly we were sent home. But speaking to leadership the last few days, it's my understanding something's going to happen sooner than later on that arbitration cap and I think eventually it'll get passed in some regards. As a matter of how important it was to have that arbitration cap in place, you know, it's real tough times municipalities are facing in their budgets and so it's important that we have a cap in place and that, you know, we need to keep property taxes down. That leads me to my, one of my bills that I'm trying to get through the Assembly is a county tax assessor, establishing a county tax assessor office and Senator Evander already passed it through his committee, county tax assessor would, whether it establishes a county tax assessor office. Where, as you know, Atlantic City and surrounding towns, the valuations of those towns have caused a lot of tax appeals where we lost a lot of tax revenue where the valuations decreased. In this bill, it would establish, the valuations would stay at that 100% mark and going forward, towns wouldn't be required to do an assessment or revaluations and in the long term, it would save a lot of money for municipalities. Also, in this bill, tax appeals, if there is tax appeals, would move up from April 1st to January 1st. This way, county and municipal budgets would be able to realize exactly what they would lose in tax revenue or tax appeals. So this is something I'm working on and I'm trying to find my way, if you will, doing assembly for the mayor. It's a, it's a job that I feel that coming from the mayor's position or municipality, I have a lot of things I could bring to the table because I understand, you know, we're at the bottom of the totem pole here and a lot of mandates, 2% caps and things of this nature that were put on to municipalities. I feel I can give a lot of input and I'm certainly trying to do that and trying to establish things that will help taxpayers, especially in District Two. Also, on the Sandy, the Superstorm Sandy, I was a primary sponsor for the Sandy Bill Rights. This is actually establishing a footprint where there'd be more transparency and the money where it had to go, it goes to the right places. As we know, there was a lot of mistakes made with the money and with getting back to people with answers, putting people on waiting lists, they were all for a long time. People who had money, they started to rebuild and the state said, no, we have to look at it and then we can get back to them for, you know, a year or so. So, in this Bill Rights Bill, it establishes a footprint going forward. God forbid if there's other storms that come in that it'll be more organized and people will get the money they need and also the help they need. So that's basically a little bit, I didn't want to take up the business of Margate, but I certainly appreciate this opportunity to come in here and speaking and I look forward to anything that anybody needs or any, you know, my district, District Two office is in Northfield. I'm with Senator Waylon and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Vince. Very well done. Thank you. At this point, we'll open to public comment.
Civil, respectful, I don't think so. Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mayor, the ACE investigative reporter for the AC Press, Alisa LaLa, scooped the Down Beach Current not once but twice to show just how inept, incompetent your leadership is, whether it's the library board, the school board. And the wonderful thing about this last article, Down Beach Towns, High Taxes Pay High Salaries, it quotes Mr. Pakinowski in the Vendor Board of Education, the president there, and he said, he repeatedly asked Margate to consolidate school districts but has been shut down. Quote, "Vender is now and always has been open to any and all shared services with the Margate School District." Mr. Mazzio has been on the Don Williams Show and other shows talking about shared services, but Mr. Mazzio should be aware that Margate is paying 200 to 300% more per pupil per year. I had the email here from Mr. Pakinowski, if he'd like to see it. We're paying close to $30,000 a head and the cost in vendor is $10,000 to $15,000. It would literally save the Margate taxpayers millions of dollars each and every year. So Mayor, despite your continued arguments that vendor is the problem, vendor stonewalling, Mr. Pakinowski has made it abundantly clear, it's you, Mayor. In fact, I have a, two emails from Mr. Pakinowski. If the Margate Mayor and/or the Board President wishes to reach out to me to get our position, I am available at any time. And yet I have already quoted his position that they're open to any and all shared services. What are you going to do to lower the taxes for the senior citizens of this town when we're paying $30,000 a head and vendor can do it for 10 or 15? Isn't that seem like a ripe place for consolidation and merger? We're talking about initial program K to three. And if your cohort, co-defendant and co-conspirator can recall prior to Ann Pankos' death, this was high on Ann Pankos' agenda to seek the closure of one of the two schools. And I think it's time, Mayor, for either you or your cohort to get back in touch with the Vendor Commissioners and/or the Vendor Board of Education.
15 seconds, John.
And begin to negotiate the K to three merger with Ventnor City. Perhaps Mr. Mazzio will act as an arbitrator, mediator, since he is so gung ho for shared services.
Thank you.
Let's put the pedal to the metal. Let's get moving, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Steven Altman, 9003 Amherst Avenue, Margate. And in solidarity with the Ukrainians, I'm also Jewish. Just thought I'd add that out. They're requiring Jews to register in the Ukraine, Tom.
Oh, okay.
Two things. I've been coming to these meetings for about 14 years since I returned to Margate and I have wondered why at these public meetings, we don't hear discussion, debate, and opinion from our commissioners. I have, for example, this is an example, Mr. Becker, not a suggestion again, that we change our beach block parking regulations. No one has ever said to me publicly, why the beach block parking regulations are the way they are. And it would be great to have somebody say, well, we don't want to change the beach block parking regulations because, and to hear an interesting discussion on that. There are many discussions that don't get discussed here. We just get an example of ordinances. Which brings me to the second point that I'd like to make. We have all these ordinances that I'm sure you're going to pass, increasing fines. But tell me where the average citizen can go to look up the ordinances that govern our lives. I know Tom has them in his office, but I think we ought to have a public place where a public citizen can walk up and look at those ordinances so that they know what the laws are.
Steve, I just, they're on our website.
Pardon me?
The ordinances and resolutions are listed on our website.
On your website, but not all of them are.
Okay.
It's not complete.
What do you mean by that?
From what I understood...
Are code books on, on, on the website?
The code book is complete, the new one, is there?
Yeah.
Oh, I stand corrected.
And also, if I'm not mistaken, Steve, I believe the library maintains a hard copy of...
Hard copies of the...
I believe so, yeah.
We, we don't have generally that kind of information available to the public.
So all available online, Steve?
No, I understood that, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that, Tom. But as I said at the last meeting, we ought to have information on the calendars that go out that direct you to things like that. I mean, here we're going to be charging $100 for grass and bushels and weeds and that sort of thing. The average citizen that comes down for 10 weeks out of the year, they need something as a hard copy. We hand out the calendar, which I think is a brilliant thing, and we ought to be able to direct people to where they can look up other regulations that may affect them. So just a suggestion, and I really enjoy hearing what our commissioners think of beach block parking someday, and I thank you.
Steve, the offer to take your mother to the beach is still there.
I realize that and you've been wonderful and the chief has been wonderful, I really do, but I truly, when you research the history that Frank Farley was the one to get the first beach block restrictions for his girlfriend, I, I really think that we should look at regulations more in terms of what's good for the community, not good for special interests. And I hope one of these days to win that argument.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Sharon Simon, 424 North Earlow Avenue. To follow up on Mr. Altman's comments, that is an issue for a lot of us, that, that we don't have public discussion and that, you may recall, our prior commissions and our prior school board, and I'm sure in Northfield in their meetings, and I've been to other community meetings, you ask a question and you get an answer or a discussion and it's not just a comment, period. And the school board, this school board which you appointed Mayor, decided to make it comment no-answer questions. And you tried to follow suit with that and actually proposed a resolution to that effect and people in the public came up and said they thought it was a violation of First Amendment rights and so on and so forth. So it didn't pass, but in effect you do it anyway. So it would be nice that they're not personal interest and people do things that they want and we do follow procedures. And on that note, I will say that today I was informed that Commissioner Thauvin redacted some things from a document that I Oprahd. It was her report to our independent auditor report against Tom Eltonner, which is the subject of a legal case right now against the city costing taxpayers a lot of money. But in any event, I would please like the clerk who has the authority in the official capacity, or I guess maybe the solicitor, to determine what was redacted, if it was redacted properly, and to give me the reasons under the Oprah ordinances or regulations why it's redacted. Otherwise, please give me a unredacted copy. Thank you. Also, there was an article about Margate teachers' concerns in the current, this week, there was a recent board, school board meeting. Teachers and parents have had a lot of complaints and concerns about the school district, again, reflecting the school board that you have appointed. And everybody was so happy that finally, once, at a school board meeting, which evidently the teachers pressed for and they all had to sign rice notices to have a meeting, but in any event, they were so excited because for once the board was not rude and disrespectful and listened to them. That was their, they were so thrilled about it. But in the meantime, as you can see from this article, the teachers and the parents are not happy and the MEF has had two meetings, one with the superintendent separately and one with you, Mayor Becker, where 20-plus, 30-plus, maybe 40 people were there saying all their concerns about what they were dissatisfied with the school district and how it's gone down in the education and there's not communication and all those things, both to the superintendent and both to you, and nothing seems to have changed. And this was months and months ago. And the big quote from our school board president is, he commended the board and superintendent and teachers for having an open forum to address issues. There's anything but an open forum. So I ask if you could follow suit on what the parents asked you to do? And the superintendent at this meeting stated she wasn't aware that anybody had any concerns. So how she wasn't aware, when they say at the meeting where people write emails, where they had a meeting with her and a meeting with you, if she really isn't aware, then she needs to leave a superintendent. I hear there's an opening in Linwood, maybe she could go over there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve Warner, 103 North Sumner Avenue. I was reading in the press, I don't know, maybe a month ago, that the, about the county taxes, and it seems to me that Margate's paying like around $20 million in county taxes. Is that correct, Scott? Yes, so, sir. And I also noticed that Aharbor Township is paying like $20 million in county taxes, give or take, okay? You know, Margate's two square miles, Aharbor Township's 38 square miles. I think there's, I think Margate's paying too much money in county taxes. I just noticed that, you know, my taxes were up $400 this year, all county taxes, and I think that that's a place where we could, you know, that maybe there should be some kind of reevaluation. And since Mr. Mazzio is here, that's something possible you could look into, that, like I said, I think Margate's paying too much in county taxes. That's one thing. And the other thing I have to say, I just had some dealings, I'm all for saving money, okay? But I just had some dealings with Vendor and they seem like they're really, really hurting for money, okay? And I don't, if we're going to do anything, let's just make sure that we don't get stuck holding the bag there. That's all. Now, you know, you laugh, Scott, but they're, I mean, it's, it's, they're from hunger. They're from hunger and...
It's a shame.
It's a shame, it is. And I don't want, I don't want this city to get dragged down. That's all.
Steve, just for your benefit, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but tax, county payable taxes is not based on anything with size or population, it's all based on net valuation of property.
Valuation.
Yes, so you're saying a revow, which we had one done about seven years ago, I think, but has nothing to do with size. There needs to be a change in the state law, how it's, the formula and all that, but it has really nothing to do with size.
I still think we're paying too much.
Steve, we have the third highest ratable in the county behind Atlantic City and Aharbor Township.
Right.
So, its value is what they get, what they tax you on, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for your consideration on that.
Anyone else? Motion to close public comment, please.
Make a motion that we close public comment.
Mr. Becker, yes. Ms. Thauvin.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on ordinances, second reading of ordinances or resolutions?
Whenever you're finished, Mayor, take your time.
I'm ready, John.
I know you can multitask.
I can.
We've seen the results of that.
I have, of course.
Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mayor, your undivided attention to ordinance 2014-13, unlucky number for the taxpayers. Mayor, can you, our esteemed solicitor, shed some light on the bond issues that are floating about with this school board that you've appointed to tax and spend? Mayor, if you recall, can you recall, I should put it that way, can you recall at the Board of Estimate meeting where there was a discussion of the bond to remove the tiles, Mayor? Do you recall that bond, Mayor? That's a question.
I do, John.
Okay. Recall how much that bond was for, Mayor?
The total bond?
Yeah.
Where the, where to remove the tile?
Yes. That's a question, Mayor.
I do not remember what the...
I'm not surprised.
I knew you were...
I'm not surprised in a lease, Mayor. That doesn't surprise me. But you know what 10% of that bond would be in a referral fee, Mayor?
I do not, John. How much would that be?
$130,000, Mayor. That's a lot of loose change on the table. But let's get back to the point. This $1.3 million for the bogus henny-penny removal of tile, and if you read the handout I gave out last commission meeting, this is absurd to remove the tile because you only get the asbestos sticking into all the surfaces, ceiling tiles, walls, draperies, and you create a far more hazardous situation than if it was stabilized and covered with additional carpet. Instead, we're going to blow $1.3 million. And my question today is, is this part and parcel of the $2,257,834 in 13?
That is correct.
You're saying that the tile removal is in this appropriation?
That is correct.
I don't see it anywhere, Mayor. Can you point it out to me, perhaps?
It was my understanding that that included that, John.
I don't see it anywhere there. This is harking back to Mr. Altman's point, that both ordinances and resolutions in their totality should be put on the web prior to each commission meeting so people can peruse them more carefully. Since you can't see it, I can't see it, I suspect that it's not only two and a quarter plus million, but another 1.3 million for the asbestos tiles.
That is incorrect, John.
I beg to differ. We're here, we're within this number 13 ordinance.
John, I will agree with you, though. I think we should be more open about putting our ordinances and things out there.
Transparency, Mayor, you ran on that thread.
Well, I did.
It's been a long slog and very little transparency.
John, we'll, I'll have somebody check that and get back to you.
I want to know the answer to that, Mayor.
You will have it, John. Thank you.
Because I, I would ask that today, that today, your cohort, co-conspirator vote no.
That's you.
That's, that's Ms. Bamboozle there.
15 seconds, John.
I ask her to vote no, to vote no, along with Commissioner Blumberg, until we get a resolution of that $1.3 million. I want to see that excluded and I want to see new carpet put down, not, not a asbestos henny-penny operation there at $1.3 million. That's insane. And I want further clarification of this bond issue. It's not adequate for me and I'm sure it's not adequate for other taxpayers. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, can I propose something regarding what Mr. Sewell said? When we vote on that, I'll note that it includes the asbestos remediation. Sound good?
Absolutely.
I know that the appropriation isn't for $3.5 million, it's for $2.2 and that's to be included.
Actually, John, if I, if I am correct, the total bond was 2.2, of which they got a rod grant for 40%, and if you take the 2.2 and take all 40%, I bet you get 1.3.
You can't come and read this...
But I agree with that, John. I absolutely don't.
Clarification and transparency, Mayor.
Steve, you're, Mayor, really, in all fairness, it's just a caption. You have to read the ordinance, or the bond ordinance.
Exactly. That's why you have a, that's why you have an introduction, an advertisement, and then the public hearing, because it gives you the opportunity after it's advertised or introduced or after you read it to come in and get a copy. You can't possibly get everything on an agenda.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Just for clarifications on the number that we were just talking about, the school, why wasn't this discussed? Why is it always someone from the community bringing these things here? Why wasn't this discussed at the Board of Estimate meeting? Why aren't you and Commissioner Thauvin asking these questions of the school board? This is a lot of taxpayers' money and I don't know how you can vote on something and approve of the budget or even discuss it amongst yourself without all the details. And it seems like you guys just say, okay, and whatever this board says or whatever, and it takes like John or somebody else to come up and say, well, wait a minute, what does this mean? What does this include? You know, that's your job. That's your job for the taxpayers. And why wasn't this discussed at the Board of School Estimate? I wasn't able to come to the meeting, but, you know, it should be discussed and not only that, the school board...
It was talked about.
Not only that, the school board should be providing you, as our representatives, with a detail of everything and what it means and the asbestos and everything. We shouldn't have to fish for the information. They should have to give a report and whether it affects whether you're going to vote on tonight, I think that you should ask the school board for a full detailed report of that and it should be available to taxpayers. I think it's only fair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reading this, there was no mention of the asbestos...
Is, is there anyone else? Public comment, please. Motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion that we close public comment.
Second. Mr. Becker, yes. Ms. Thauvin.
Yes.
Tom?
Second reading of ordinance 2014-09, providing for capital improvements and extraordinary repairs in around Margate City by Hurricane Sandy. This is the, in the amount of $1,670,250. Public hearing only on this, we're not going to have the vote, but we've already had the public hearing, so I'm going to move on to the next one. There's a local finance board glitch that we can't adopt it until the state, until something is done, so we have to hold off on adopting. Ordinance 2014-11, the mending chapter 257, vehicles and traffic, open for vote.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker? Yes. Ms. Thauvin.
Yes.
2014-12, granting consent, permission to South Jersey Gas to use public streets.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Thauvin?
Yes.
13, bond or appropriating $2,257,834 in the various mentioned categories.
I'll make a notion to approve, provided that this includes the asbestos remediation.
I'll second that. Mr. Becker? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
2014, Scott, it's okay with you, 14 through 23 are all the same? No, the same, but they're just increasing fines instead of reading all nine or 10 of them?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner Tobbey, the reason we did that is I was advised, for purposes of putting it in our code book, all these increases in fines, which were doing to be uniform with the other communities in South Jersey, but we had to do them separately because each one goes into a separate section of our code book. That's why. But I think you can do it by all want and approve. They're all essentially the same. It's a raising of fines. So Tom, what do you want to do from 14 through...
If we can get a motion to finally adopt ordinances 2014, number 14 through 23 inclusive.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
Resolution, I'm sorry. Resolution 88, authorized payment of claims and payroll.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
89, authorizes the auction for these parking spaces at the municipal parking lot.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
Number 90, awards a contract for the CDBG bulkhead access to KNG Marine in the amount of $35,600.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
91 has to come off.
Okay. This was, all right, back to 90 though. Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
91 has to be removed. 92, affirm Margate's civil rights policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, volunteers, independent contractors, with volunteers.
I'll make that motion.
I'm not familiar with what this says.
Dave, was this, where did this come, did this come through you or?
No.
This is Scott?
No. I didn't have anything to do with it.
Who'd it come from?
I don't know. I don't know when all this thing... Yeah.
I just don't know about it. I feel better.
It may have, all right, we can pull it. It may have something to do with the, what do you call it, Dave? The handbook?
I don't believe so.
No?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Let me just look at one thing.
Yeah, I don't know either. I know the handbook. I didn't, I didn't know we had a separate ordinance here. Maybe we ought to hold that.
All right. I just wanted to see what it looked like.
I'm sure it's something required, but I didn't see that there.
There's a, it's from Lisa and it's for the Melwans, for the handbook, but if you want to pull it, we'll pull it.
Oh.
I'm okay with it then.
We ought to be all right with it now, right? We must be.
Mel, yes.
All right. Are we going to vote on that one?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Sorry, did move. I moved. One second.
Oh, I'll second.
Yes.
Call roll, Tom.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
Okay. 93 is awarding a contract to tactical public safety for the purchase of radio-assisted equipment under State Contract T-0109 in the amount of, we have to add those three together.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
And 94 accepts the revised employee handbook.
I'll make the motion.
I will second that and thank all those that worked on getting this done. It's very important.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
And 95, authorizes tax certificate redemption, certificate 93, 909-13.
Make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
And 96 is a yearly one that authorizes the assessor to file petitions of appeal in the case of errors.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stolby?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. There are motion to adjourn this meeting.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Happy holidays, everybody.
Mr. Becker?